Welcome to the July 17th zoning board hearing. Nice to have a full membered crew. Nobody's on vacation. If you are, welcome back. If you're not, you better go. We don't have much time left. We have no -- we have just one board member has a conflict on a certain hearing, so of course that board member will not participate. We have any general business for the board? Any questions from the board members? Hearing none. I believe we are scheduling our next hearing, which is the summer schedule, which will be the third week in August. Correct? We're following the planning boards. So...
August 21st?
Yeah, so we're at the August 21st. Just let us know if any of you are going to be on vacation so that we'll know what we have for a board participation. I'm not sure that the 705 applicant is here yet. I'm going to call out for Emily Viti. Is Emily in the room? Okay, Emily is on a continuance from the last hearing. I hope she's not on vacation. What I'll do is I'll table her, and then we'll put her in line when she does come -- when she does come in, if she does come in. If not, we may have to -- I didn't get notification that she may have been on vacation, but we'll try and work with her the best we can. With that, we are going to be going to the next hearing. That hearing is scheduled for 7:10. This is the hearing on Jamie Sanchez. Is Jamie Sanchez in the room?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come on up, sir, and come up to the microphone, please?
If I want to step up.
Okay. You can actually sit if you want. Okay, as I prepare for this, because we've got to get close to 7:10 as possible, because it's a scheduled public hearing. We'll have the five main members of the board hearing this one. So on the panel with this particular applicant, I need this, of course. Thank you. Myself, Mary Carson, David Pine, Joseph, John Dagnes, three, four, five, and then, of course, we have the -- our alternates as well that always participate, and we welcome that input. I'll start to read the public notice by that point in time. Any type of comments that will come in, we will be ready. This is on the application of Jamie Sanchez of 96 Mount Pleasant Street, Milford, Mass, for special permit pursuant to relief of Sections 3.1.3 and 3.1.4 of the zoning bylaw in relation to a 5,000-square-foot parcel of land located on the southeastally intersection of Hayward Street and Mount Pleasant, known and numbered as 31 Mount Pleasant. The relief is sought to permit the conversion of the existing structure on the premises from its prior use or as a -- prior use of a two-family with a commercial on the first floor to a three-family dwelling. Copies of these petitions, of course, were filed at town clerk's office. As his attorney, Bert Nazzi, is preparing something on the board for us, I'll read from the applicant's application. Concerning the question, "Please explain the special permit is sought with the harmony of the general purpose and intent of the bylaw." The applicant states that the residential use of the premises is appropriate in the residential district, and the relief is sought is consistent with the purpose and the intent of the zoning bylaw as set forth in Section 1.2 of the bylaw. Concerning the question that the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic or congestion or congestion and impair pedestrian safety, the applicant states that the elimination of the commercial use of the premises will reduce traffic onto and off of the premises and improve pedestrian safety. This is a sufficient off-street parking onsite to accommodate the use of the premises as a three-family. And then it says, "Concerning the question of the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create nuisance or hazards affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, the applicant states that the proposed multifamily use of the premises is consistent with the use of other properties in the neighborhood, and the elimination of the commercial use of the premises will benefit the neighborhood and the public in general." With that, I do have a letter from the planning board, and they have reviewed it on June 17th. Favorable recommendations stipulated required to show that the six parking spaces and stripe see Town Planner letter. The Town Planner letter indicates that the conversion will require six off-street parking spaces for three residential units. The site can currently only accommodate three compliant spaces. Six spaces would result in only double stacking the spaces. The entire rear east side has already been paved with the lot coverage and open space requirements ignored entirely. I recommend a favorable report be followed to the zoning board of appeals. If it satisfies replacing the commercial unit with another apartment, it's beneficial to the neighborhood. With that, Mr. Bert Nazzi, the floor is yours.
I have a couple of packets of packing materials. I don't know who's sitting here. All five main members. It's fine. Keep that.
Is this in my packet, too? Is this in my main packet?
No, that's additional materials. That's the same plan on top. It's the same plan that's up here, but this is awful small, and I didn't think you'd be able to see it. I couldn't see it certainly from your seat if I was sitting there myself.
Okay.
So again, my name's David Bert Nazzi. I'm here on behalf of Jamie Sanchez of 96 Mount Pleasant Street. He's your petitioner. He is here with me this evening. As the chairman indicated, this petition relates to the property at 31 Mount Pleasant Street. By way of orientation, 31 Mount Pleasant Street is on the corner of the intersection of Mount Pleasant Street with Hayward Street. There is a copy of a portion of the assessor's map in the packet that I gave you. The property is highlighted in green on that map. By way of history, the subject property is nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming as to use, having been used for a period of time as a two-family with a commercial use in this section of the building over here. I remember there being a bridal shop in there. There was a law office that was in there for a period of time. I think there was also something of a convenience store that was in there for a period of time as well. But at some point, a prior owner converted the use of the property, at least in that portion of it, to residential use, thereby making the property a three-family. I'm not sure exactly when that happened. There's a copy of the assessor's records in the packet that I gave you. The town began assessing the property as a three-family in, I believe, 2007, so it must have happened sometime around that period of time. The property was foreclosed. My client acquired it in March of 2013. Since acquiring it, he's done some substantial upgrades to the property, including replacing the heating system, upgrading the electrical, upgrading the fire escapes. As it presently sits, there are the existing, the sort of always existing two units in the main portion of the building. There's a three-bedroom unit on the first floor, a two-bedroom unit on the second floor, and then the converted residential dwelling, the third dwelling in the old commercial section, and there are two bedrooms in that portion of the property.
Okay.
Again, there is a pretty good-sized, I don't know if you're driven by it, but there's -- this picture will reflect it, a pretty good-sized parking area off in this section off of Hayward Street, and they would -- that section would be more than able to accommodate parking requirements for a three-family dwelling. Since the planning board made its favorable recommendation with the suggestion that the parking area be lined, I would note that my client has lined it, and I think there were four stacked parking spaces there, so you could accommodate, in addition to the two spaces per unit, another two spaces. It's pretty deep. You might even be able to get three spaces, three cars in there, depending on the size of the vehicles. So the petitioner is seeking zoning relief in the form of a special permit that would permit the continued use of the property as a three-family dwelling. Obviously, this type of relief is allowed under the bylaw on a special permit basis. The property is zoned residentially, and if you drive around that area, you'll see that predominantly the properties in the area are used residentially. There's not a lot of commercial use down in there. I don't know that my photographs do it a lot of credit. I don't think my photographs do anything a lot of credit, but this is a really...
Need color.
I need a lot of things. But in any event, this is a really tight and pretty well-traveled intersection down there, and in particular, in the vicinity of this property and the area that we're talking about, it's really tight. The wall is of this portion of the structure is right on Hayward Street, so that in order to get around the building there, you have to actually walk in for pedestrian or a car. You'd have to go into the traveled section of Hayward Street to get around that building. So I would suggest to you that any reduction in traffic, pedestrian and vehicular, is going to be beneficial to the neighborhood, is going to be beneficial to the community, and I would suggest to you that a change from a commercial use to a residential use is going to reduce the traffic, the flow of traffic in and about this property and take some of the pressure off of that intersection. So as it relates to the test for whether or not a special permit could be permitted, I would suggest that certainly the replacement of a commercial use with a residential use at this particular property is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. The relief is permissible under the bylaw. The bylaw, the property is zoned residentially. It will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. In fact, it would have an opposite effect, as previously stated, and likewise, it will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, general welfare of the public. It would have an opposite effect. So I would suggest that this is a meritorious petition, and having said that, we're happy to answer whatever questions the board might have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Attorney Bert Nazzi. I'd like to have a comment from the building inspector. John, can you give us your overview and update on this?
Yeah, this was...
Joe, can you -- Charlie, can you give him a microphone, please? Sorry. We got to get you on the TV with that tan.
Thank you. This property, as Attorney Bert Nazzi stated, was formally used as legally with a special permit, two residential units plus a commercial office space. At some point, a number of years ago, somebody just began using it as a third dwelling unit. Doesn't appear that they made any modifications to it, but, you know, it was always a residential -- or at one point, it was a residential space that they started using for the office use, and then returned using it as a residential dwelling unit. When the applicant bought it, he was under the impression that it was three dwelling units. It certainly had every appearance of it, and at some point, it came to my attention, you know, that it was only approved as -- with that space as an office use, so, you know, his only recourse is to start renting it out for office use or come here and, you know, look for the special permit approval to use it as a dwelling unit, and, you know, I would be all in favor of a dwelling unit use.
Code compliance is okay?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. All right, before we turn it over to the audience, I'll start with the board members for questions. John, I'll start with you.
Attorney Bert Nazzi, the additional parking in the rear of the building, is that -- I believe it's striped already from the pitch.
It's already striped. When the planning board made the recommendation, my client striped it, and the photographs show that.
And is that for how many spaces?
Actually, I believe the planning board was saying they wanted three rows of two stacks, and he's got four rows of two stacks there, and I think you could put three cars in there, depending on how size...
It is two. Okay, I was wondering if it was double stacked.
They're double stacked or triple stacked, depending on how big the car is.
Okay, fine. No other question.
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
Joe? No questions. Brian?
What are the bedroom counts on the three units that are in there?
In the main portion, the original units, there's three bedrooms on the first floor, there's two bedrooms on the second floor, and in the converted section, there's two bedrooms there.
Okay. Charlie? All set. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this application? If not, we'll close the hearing, take it on advisement. You have the last word before we make our decision.
Yeah, as I say when I come here, always with mind, they're always meritorious, and they always meet the standards in the bylaw, but in this instance, you know, this truly does meet the standards for the issuance of a special permit. The petition is meritorious, and I would respectfully request that the board grant the relief sought.
Great, thank you, attorney. I'll take a motion.
I most approve.
Motion by David, approved. Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Congratulations. You'll know what you need to do. Thank you very much. Why don't you take the sheet for the other one? The next applicant is Robert and Dolores DeVita.
No, this one did.
Invisible again.
On this one here, Charlie, I'll put you on this one, too, and Brian will go on the next one. I'm going to make sure that I close this up all right. Welcome. Okay. This is on the application, which is after 17, on the application of Robert and Dolores DeVita of 3 Wilson Road, Milford, for a various release permit for setback provisions of Section 2.4 and/or 2.5 of the zoning bylaw, special permit relief as appropriate in relation to 11,991 square-foot, more or less, parcel of land located on the east side of Wilson Road, known and numbered as number three. The relief is sought to permit the construction, in addition to the attached garage, of the existing single-family dwelling closer to the lot line that is otherwise permitted. Concerning the application that was submitted, the -- on the question, explain the reasons that you assert that the special permit sought in harmony with the general public purpose of the intent of the bylaw. The applicant states that the residential area will remain residential. Concerning the question of the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety, the applicant states that will improve the congestion and safety. And on the last question, if the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, the applicant states no impact. We do have a letter in here from the planning board. They did review this on June 17th, recommends a favorable recommendation. They asked to see Town Planner letter. Town Planner indicates that the lot is a regular-shaped corner lot, and the existing house is nonconforming as to the front yard setback from the Packard Road. Any expansion of the building requires a special permit, and the proposed side encroachment requires a variance. The proposed addition would expand the single-car garage to two-car garage. He recommended a favorable report be followed to the zoning board of appeals. Do we have a comment from the building inspector?
No comment on this one.
No comment. With that, Mr. and Mrs. DeVita, please give us an idea of what you're trying to do.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, as mentioned by your chairman, we currently live in a single-family home with a one-car attached garage. Our purpose for -- our purpose in being here tonight is to request permission to build a second single-bay garage next to the existing. There is no living quarters above the existing garage, and there will be no living quarters above the proposed addition. As I mentioned to the planning board, our request is as much for safety as it is convenience. My wife, Dolores, and I have lived in this house for nearly 30 years. We love the neighborhood. We believe it might be termed what one would call an old-town neighborhood. The neighbors are all a pretty close-knit community. We have a lot of children in the community, in the neighborhood. Those numbers of children are increasing every day, which is fine, but the children like to play in the street. They like to ride their bicycles in the street. There are no sidewalks in the area, nor are any planned. So this addition of the garage and the expansion of the driveway will allow us, plain and simple, to get some cars off the street. We think that's particularly important in the wintertime as well as the summer, so we ask for your permission and would seek the necessary zoning board of appeals approval to do that.
Okay, great.
Any questions that you have, we'll be glad to answer them.
I just want to mention to the board that the proposed addition is 11.3 by 28 -- it's a total addition that will be 6.8 feet from the front side property line, with 10 is required by our regulations. With that, I'll turn it over to the board members. I'll start with you, Charlie, on this side.
So what you're going to do here is, obviously, with the one garage, you've got to pull one car in and another car behind you, and you want to keep them off the streets, and you want to open it up so you can pull both cars in the garage?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Brian?
I didn't see a photo of the house, but is there any way you could have fitted off Packard Road that garage? Here where your deck is right now, the layout of the house, was that even a possibility?
You mean attach it to the existing garage from Packard Road?
No, on the back, you've got a garage in the back.
Right here. I think he's talking about over here.
You've got a front end along Packard.
No, that was not a...
What the house could do.
Yeah, to be honest with you, was not a consideration. We have an existing garage there, and the driveway is there, and the flow of traffic just lends itself to expanding the existing.
Joseph?
No questions.
I'm -- I don't have any currently right now. Go ahead.
No, if the lot was in so odd shape, you wouldn't be here, so I have no problem with that.
I can see, to Brian's question, I can see why he wouldn't want to go on the other side, because it clearly is on the opposite side of the flow of the house itself, so...
He'd be walking around the entire house to get to the garage, and that defeats the purpose of...
Doing it right next to the other one.
You know, not being out in the weather, so I have no problem with that.
Actually, he could have put a lift in the current garage, and then he could have went up.
Put it up.
We didn't consider that either, Mr. Chairman.
I don't know why.
Why not underground?
Dave?
I'm all set.
John?
No.
Mark?
I agree with Mary. If the lot wasn't so wide-sized, you wouldn't even be here. No questions.
Anybody from the audience? Yes. Barbara?
We're the neighbor that is adjacent on the garage side of the house, and myself and my brother Joseph very own that property that's adjacent on the garage side, so we would be the -- probably the ones that would be most impacted. We don't have an issue with the addition of the garage, but we do get a lot of water in our basement, and the grade of the road is such that the water runs down towards our property, and we were -- I'm here just to request that something be done with the drainage right now. I noticed that the downspouts from the current structure are pointing towards our property line, and I don't know if they can be turned or diverted somehow so that the water isn't all flowing off from an even larger structure towards our house. We've had to put pumps in that basement because we are prone to a lot of water in that area, and we have had some damage to our deck as a result of water in the past, so we're just here seeking maybe some kind of consideration of management of the water flow from the property. And that's all we have, but we have no objection to the addition of the garage.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else want to be heard on this applicant? That's something you can work with.
I'd be more than happy to seek professional advice on that, and if they make that recommendation...
And add the water in a way so that we don't add more water to someone? That's okay?
No, I don't have a problem with that at all, Mr. Chairman.
Super. With that, we're going to -- we'll close the hearing, and we'll take that under advisement. Do you have the last word before we vote?
No, we would just ask that we've always been good neighbors, and we want to continue to be good neighbors and live in a safe and convenient neighborhood for everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much. Glad you're hanging there for a minute. We have a motion. Basically, he's willing to cooperate, of course, to try and make sure that the elevation of the flow of the water doesn't get worse or prevents any flooding, so if you want to throw that in there, that's fine, but I have no issues with it.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary. Second by Dave. John? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Procedure is a 20-day appeal period. Once you get the decision from Attorney Moody, and then you'll be ready to go. Record the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Don't forget to record your decision, okay? All right, great. Good luck. Thank you.
Good luck. You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Next applicant is on the application of Michael Cassasanta. Before we start, is Emily Viti in the room? She's still not here? Kelly's going to be passing around to everybody, which is a registration to anybody that's in the room. Could you please sign it, and we'll get it back from you. Michael, how are you?
How are you?
Good. Hi. You're getting old. Your attorney's older. This is on the application of Michael Cassasanta of 39 Emmons Street, Milford, Mass., for a special permit pursuant to Section 2.3 of the bylaw and Section 3.1 of the bylaw in relation to a parcel of land located on the east side of Emmons Street, known and numbered as 39 Emmons. The special permit relief is sought to permit the establishment of a supplemental apartment within a single-family dwelling and to provide the necessary extensions and improvements to that dwelling to accommodate the supplemental apartment within. We do have a -- the applicant's form here. Joe, I'm going to turn these three questions over to you. The first thing I'm going to do is, the special permit is sought with the general purpose and the intent of the zoning bylaw of Article 2.3. And then also, concerning the question of the use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety, and also concerning the question that the proposals of the premises will not harm to the neighborhood and create the hazard affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Since you are represented here tonight, Mr. Cassasanta, that your attorney will be answering those questions, I will read the letter to the zoning board from Town Planner letter just for it's on the record, and this particular letter, the planning board did review this on July 15th, basically voted unfavorable, and according to the Town Letter, the Town Planner letter, the proposal appears to include a minor addition to the existing house to accommodate the supplemental apartment. However, the flood, the floor plans referenced in the application have not yet been submitted. Although the proposed use is provided for generally in the zoning bylaw, he recommended an unfavorable report be sent out to this board unless the required building floor plans are provided to the public hearing as required. With that, Attorney Antonellis, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the record, Attorney Antonellis, on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Cassasanta, both of whom we had time. So I'm going to pass out what I think will help the board in understanding the full scope of what really is a very minor addition to an existing structure on Emmons Street. Again, your earlier applicant spoke about a neighborhood in Milford, and Emmons Street is one of the older neighborhoods in Milford, and by way of introduction, I think you know that Michael Cassasanta grew up in Milford. He and his family, for the most part, have lived for quite a few years in the town of Hawkington. Recently, as their children have grown older and as the family made a decision, Mike and his wife made a decision to move back to Milford, had the opportunity to buy an established home on Emmons Street. Donna Cassasanta's mom is the person who will benefit from most from this petition. She is about to turn 84 years old, and she has been a resident with them in Hawkington in a situation very much like this, where there was an in-law apartment created. She is used to having had her privacy within the house, and I think that Mike and Donna have been used to having their privacy in the house. When Mike -- and by the way, just as a point of clarification, your application was filed while Mike was under a purchase and sales agreement. while Mike was under a purchase and sales agreement, Mike and Donna had yet to purchase the house. When they filed the application, they have purchased the house, they are presently living there now, and I think Michael can tell you that he has had conversations with Mr. Erickson relative to this project. This is the existing home on Emmons Street as seen from the street. The particular area that I think is the cause of concern for the Town Planner lies right here on the porch. The porch is existing, this was existing and has been existing for quite some time. Obviously, all, most of our properties here in Milford on these small neighborhoods are now non-conforming due to the changes in the zoning. This is the plan, the existing layout of the home here that has been provided. You each have a packet of that, showing the family room, the eating kitchen, the areas of the living area, and then the upstairs is not shown on this, but there are bedrooms upstairs. What we'd like to do is show you a new interior with the highlighted areas being the reconfiguration of this area in here, okay? And then what we'd like to do, and really I think the subject of this petition as it relates to the neighborhood, is to enclose this portion of the porch that you see outlined in blue here, again, you can see it here, so as to create a weather-tight structure, have a kitchen at, built within there, and a separate entrance that would allow Mrs. Donna's mom to have free access in and out of the building without having to go through the main house. So really, all we're asking for is the right to close in this small porch area, and as we do that, to convert that small porch area into a, a separate kitchen, which then kicks in, obviously, all of the requirements of the bylaw of creating an in-law apartment. So there are no modifications planned to the outsides of the structure. I, I think you all know, Michael has been involved in the home-building business for his entire adult life, and actually, for most of the time, he was a kid too, and he's a person whose quality of his construction is well-known in the area, and so I think that you could take my representation, and certainly Michael's, that the finished product of the closing of this porch will be done in a manner that will be architectural, architecturally pleasant. Obviously, this criteria and a special permit, there's no negative effect to the neighborhood. Again, we're making the statement that we're not expanding the footprint of the building, we're not adding one, what one would ordinarily call an apartment, which brings in a whole separate family. This is the unique aspect of the bylaw, allowing for an in-law apartment, and in this case, again, it's Donna's mom. This, the way in which it's constructed is helpful to her because it gives her an area to, where she can park her car or get out of a car and just have to re, just walk up the one step from the, from the ground level up to the deck level, and then get directly into her house. She will not have to go up the stairs inside the house because her bedroom area and her living area will all be configured on the first floor. So we do not believe that there'll be any impact to the neighborhood. This is a situation, again, that I think is, is unique in our bylaw, provides for the situation where we can put an elderly parent, not that she's all that old, because I'm getting there, into the, into the house, and again, I don't think that there's any negative impact. The bylaw is designed, creates the ability for a special permit. Michael has worked closely, I believe, with Mr. Erickson, and in fact, I think Mr. Erickson was willing to grant some building permits for the reconfiguration of the inside already because he could rearrange rooms in there, and Michael went and got the permits, but it's the aspect here, when we add this closed-in area and we put a kitchen in, we create that additional living unit, and therefore require your relief.
Thank you. Can you give me some clarity on this? Especially with the...
I have one more. John, if you need it.
Especially with the two forms of, of egress, just, just so that we're, everybody's kind of knowing what's going on. I want to make sure everybody's informed on this. And the other question I have, this is all family gonna be here?
Yes, it's all family.
Just one...
And in fact, it is just...
She's been with us for ten years in Hawkington. She moved up in 2004, 2005, with my father and mom. And who's gonna live, who else is living here?
We are.
Oh, okay, great. Beautiful.
Yeah, to the point, to the point of a family member, only an immediate family member is allowed to live in a supplemental apartment with the special permit, so that would, that would have to be the case. You know...
It does run with the applicant.
It runs with the applicant, and it, and it expires, needs to be renewed every three years.
How do you control that?
Um...
I'm just asking, because we, we ran into it just a month ago, you and I.
With our new software that just came out, less than three years ago, we have the expirations, and we have a trigger for notification.
Notification process.
But all the, all the past prior ones, most of them have expired, and I don't, we don't even have a sorted database of, you know, weight ratio, short of going through every, you know, every zoning decision manually to track it. But, and the point here is, he needs a special permit for two different reasons. One's to create that supplemental apartment, and whether that's granted or not, you know, the, the mother is going to be living with them, and they already have a permit to renovate the interior, you know, to better suit their needs. The special permit is mostly for the purpose of adding that separate entrance, which clearly is creating, you know, a separate unit. And then, because it's non-conforming on a, you know, roughly a hundred-year-old house, it was, you know, close to the prop, property line, and is allowed by today's standards, so to increase that even by that small amount of 13 feet or whatever, you know, is underneath that porch that they, that they propose to enclose, requires a, a special permit.
Thanks, John. Board members, Charlie? Turn it over to you.
Yeah. No, I just want to clarify, clarify with John, because I know of a couple, when I was on the zoning board report, we had given these in-law apartments, and unfortunately, when the in-law, being of old age, was deceased, people turned it into a second apartment for just strangers, you know, just to make income. So I'm, I'm happy with the fact that that's now being tracked, and it's not gonna be the situation, right? Once that is not being used by a family member, it just reverts back to a single-family dwelling.
Correct.
Joseph?
No, no questions.
Mary?
I'm all set.
All set? Dave? Good? John? Mark? Okay, I guess we're all set. I really don't want to hear your last word because there's nothing to say.
It's simple. Thank you to the board for their time and patience.
We've closed the hearing, and we'll want to vote on it now. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
A motion by Joe to approve, as submitted.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Unanimous.
Thank you again. Good luck.
Thank you, David. Thank you, board.
Nice seeing you. Okay, the only other one we have left, we have the...
And Viti.
Yeah, Viti, I don't know if she's there here yet, so the next applicant would be...
Corley.
Amanda Corley? Is she here?
I am.
Come on up. Let's throw this whole thing in here, and then I'll give you the sheet. All right, we're back to Brian on this one. No conflicts, I'm assuming, based on my previous questions with the board. Five new members, and Brian? Okay, this is on the application of Amanda Corley of One Geneseo Circle, Milford, for special permit relief pursuant to provisions of Section 2.3 of the zoning bylaws, in relation to a 45,000 plus or minus square foot possible of land located at the intersections of Camp Street and Geneseo Circle. The special permit relief is sought in order to permit the petitioner to keep upon the subject property residential animals and/or as a kennel operation of up to four dogs. Concerning the application, on the question to explain the reason the special permit starts in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, the applicant states that we have four dogs and need a kennel license, which I believe that triggered it. The proposed use of the premises will not create undue congestion, of course, the applicant states says no, and the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create nuisance or affect the safety, the general welfare of the public, the applications, the applicant indicates no. I do note, there's a town meeting letter to the zoning board from Town, the planning board itself, on the July 15th, they voted unfavorable, see town meeting letter. Larry Duncan letters indicate that the applicant includes no information as to how the kennel is to be operated on the property, and no site pla, site plans have been submitted. Although the proposed, proposed use is provided for generally in the zoning bylaw, I recommend an unfavorable report be filed to the zoning board of appeals unless the above noted plans are provided at the ZBA public hearing as required. With that, I am gonna turn the floor over to you, Amanda, and kind of give us an idea of what you're doing.
We moved here from out of state. My husband got a job at MIT.
Can you talk into the microphone so people can hear you, please? Thank you.
We moved here from New Mexico. We've already had all four of our dogs for the last three years. My husband got a job at MIT, that's what brought us out here. All of our dogs are fixed but one. We are not planning on running a kennel, we just want to be able to keep our current dogs. That's it. We already built a doghouse in the backyard and have a fence. They are out during the daytime. We both work at night, so when I get home around 8:30 in the morning, they are let out, and they are back in the house before I leave for work at 6 o'clock at night.
So they're out all day?
They are out during the day. We do have bark collars on them to prevent them from barking, because we do have a lot of joggers that run up and down our street. And the only time that we had an issue was them barking at the joggers. And we purchased the house in November and closed on it, and my parents actually had two of our dogs in Alabama up until May, and we were unaware of this bylaw until I got a letter in the mail.
Did you get a letter in the mail from...
I got a letter...
The zoning officer?
From Lorena Brazza.
Okay, it was the zoning officer, okay.
Yes, and...
You're in violation, you're in violation of the bylaw?
Yes, and I did respond to her. I was actually gone on military orders when I received this letter, but as soon as I got home and opened it, I contacted her and started the process of the application for all this to take place.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience want to be heard? Please stand up and state your name, sir.
Carl Walker, when he caught, I look around the corner. I've never heard dogs louder than those dogs. I've had company over, this has been going on since about March, I've had company over, and they said, "What are they doing, murdering each other or something?" You walk by that house, and that big black dog, he looks like Satan, he's ready to jump over the fence and eat you up. It's, it's, it's awful. I mean, we've been living here for eight years, and I'm a dog lover, I had a dog for 18 years, but nothing like this, nothing like this.
Okay.
It is, it is unreal.
Yes, sir.
All set?
Yeah, you want to talk?
No, I agree.
Okay. I'm on Pine Island Road, Jeff Robitaille, and I don't have a problem with their particular dogs. I have a little miserable animal with my wife's, and I do know that when we let him out, he starts barking, there's a lot of barking in the neighborhood. I'm not blaming her animals at all. If this is a non-commercial kennel, I don't have a problem. If there's any possibility this could be a commercial, or commercialized in any way down the, down the road, like if one of her dogs passes away, and it's an open spot in a kennel that could be commercialized, I would have to object to it. There's a lot of animals, wild animals, not just dogs, we have a lot of deer, we have a lot of everything down where we are, and there's, those wild animals is a tremendous reason for the dogs to bark, just like my own animal does. And so there's lots of stimulation, as long as it's not a commercial operation, I don't have an objection, but if this could even remotely be seen as a commercial operation, then I would object to this petition. Thank you.
John, can you give me some...
Yeah. What she needs in order to have more than three dogs or cats, or anyone needs this in Milford, is a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, and it's for residential animals, is, is the actual definition. To use it in a, any kind of a commercial venture, it would be a zoning violation, and that's just not allowed. So if, if that situation that was just described came up, we would, you know, we'd have to tell her that's not allowed.
Before I, before I turn it over to the board members, I, I want to, I want to ask you a quick question, because I did drive by there today. There is no solid fencing around that property.
There is not, but we do plan on putting up a privacy fence. As you see, I'm nine months pregnant, it's not like I can really go out there and help my husband put up the privacy fence right now, and it's an issue of money as well. I mean, we just moved here and purchased the house. It will take us a little time to get the money to put up the privacy fence, but it will be done.
What type of dogs do you have?
We have two Great Danes and two little Mimpin' Chihuahuas, and I actually have pictures of them, and none of them are mean or anything in nature.
They're bark.
They do, and, and like I said, we do have bark collars on them.
And when you don't have a solid fence, that does create them barking, because they see all the activity clearly through.
Yes, but...
And that probably exacerbates some of the situation.
There's also access roads to the power lines there, so there's a lot of people who just walk on those access roads behind the property on both sides of the road, so there's a lot of traffic on those roads, also, that need, would need to be blocked off.
A lot of joggers come down from 11 o'clock till 2 o'clock from EMC, and every time one passes, bedlam.
Okay. Let me turn it over to the board members and see what happens. Charlie?
Just asking this gentleman up here, what would you suggest? How, how would you...
We don't need a dog kennel, it's a friendly neighborhood. We don't need a dog kennel. Dogs that are barking, when they first came, they were barking at 2:30 at night, they kept me up for a whole hour at night.
Right.
And people have no consideration of their neighbors. I mean, you know...
And how long have you been in the neighborhood now?
We purchased the house in November, and our dogs are in the house from the time I leave for work, which is before 6:00 PM at night, till the time I get home, and my husband works from 4:00 PM to midnight, and he is home with the dogs from 1:00 in the morning till I get home. It's not, if there's dogs barking at 2:30 in the morning, it's not our dogs. Our dogs are inside, in the crates in the basement. They are not outside.
If you were to give one of your dogs to a family member, right, then you would be legal to have three dogs, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I, I just want to make that, I'm not saying you do that, because I know how animals are and how attached you get to them, but I'm just trying to get the facts out as to what are we dealing with here?
This is not gonna be a commercial kennel. We've owned all these dogs for over two years.
Right.
We don't have any family here to give a dog to, and I couldn't really make that decision.
What is your answer to this, I know you're upset, and I don't mean to, but, you know, we need to get the, what is your answer to this gentleman relative to what he is saying? Now, I don't know, there, there seems to be a, two different stories here, how do we get to the bottom of it?
I can honestly say I am not at home at 2:30 in the morning with the dogs, but my husband is, and we are able to sleep during the day with no issues with our dogs outside. And this gentleman, there are other dogs that do bark. I'm not saying my dogs aren't guilty of it, and Maddie, the black one, she does have a loud deep bark, she is one of the Great Danes, but we sleep, I mean, it doesn't bother us.
So there's no accommodation you can make to get under the legal requirements of three dogs at this point in time?
Not that I can see. All of our family member live, live in Alabama or Arizona.
No further questions? Brian?
What are the ages of the dogs you have?
Molly, we got from the pound, she's about seven. Maddie is two, and Petey and Piglet are two.
I'm gonna retire before then, by the way, so you know. The hogs will be around before I'm gone, so you know.
I just say, you and your husband work evenings?
We do.
Or is, is, there's nobody at the house or living in the house? From what time, six?
My husband leaves for work between 2:30 and 3:00, and I leave around 6 o'clock, but I only work three days a week. I'm a nurse, and I work three days a week.
Uh-huh. Now, someone is home during the daytime, then?
Yes, we are at home every day during the day.
And you don't think the dogs, they're outside all day, correct?
And you don't think the dogs, they're outside all day, correct?
They are.
All right. And your feeling is that their bark is not excessive?
My husband and I sleep during the day because we work at night. I mean...
I can, I can appreciate what this gentleman is saying because I have a neighbor, not next door, but the door, that has a dog, and had a dog, and it's just one dog.
Mm-hmm.
But they put it out, they chain it, and they go away, and it's there all day long barking.
We have put dog collars on our dogs to prevent them from barking. I know it's definitely decreased from what they're saying because all four of them have them on, and Maddie does have a scary bark. I mean, she's a big dog, but none of them have gotten out of the fence that we put up for the dogs, and they are in at night.
Which dog you talking, you say two of them are Great Danes?
They are.
They bark?
Maddie barks the most out of all four of our dogs, and she...
The other two are very small, aren't they?
They are.
Yeah, but they're big barks as well.
They bark the most.
They bark the most.
They bark the most.
And then when the one barks, they all start barking, and it drives you crazy.
Is there some way that you could have them in the house?
Why so many dogs? Was there a reason you have so many dogs, though? One or two is not enough?
We've had four dogs, like I said, for years since my husband and I have been together. We put two households together and he had two dogs and I had two dogs, it's not...
Mary?
There's not some way to keep the, instead of having the dogs outside all day, I mean, I can appreciate what the neighbor's saying.
I can...
You know, when it's quiet and that's all you hear, day after day, it's annoying, and you multiply it times four. Like I said, I'm listening to the neighbors here, and I, I think you have to work with them, and, I mean, you leave the dogs out all day, maybe you should, is there some way to have them only out then for a few hours because they're outside and someone goes by and there seems there's a lot of traffic there, foot traffic, that's what's causing the barking, and, I mean, you have to understand, maybe you don't hear it all day, it's like you have a clock in the house that chimes every fifteen minutes, you never hear it. Someone comes in your house and says, "What's that noise? What noise?"
When we...
Because you're so used to hearing it that, like I said, I just, I think, I think we have to come up with a solution.
And, and I'm fine with that. I'm more than happy to work with them. We, if Maddie is barking a lot, we automatically bring them in the house so they don't annoy the neighbors.
David? John?
Again, I'd like to see some type of solution or resolution that we can come up with here to accommodate everybody. John, I would ask you, with a solid fence, probably wouldn't lessen noise levels, but...
Could detract.
It could stop the distraction.
Could distract them from barking.
Does that resolve the situation in any way?
What some people may not be aware of is we do have a noise bylaw in town.
Yeah.
So if there is an offensive noise, whether it's loud music, loud dogs, you know, you can call the police station, they'll come down and make a determination whether or not it is excessive. So I think we already have mechanisms in place to control, you know, the dog noise, and personally, I don't see how, you know, three dogs is necessarily going to be any...
Quieter.
Quieter than four dogs, and with three dogs, we don't need to have this discussion at all, she can let them out like anyone else lets their dogs out.
And again, I think it's, it becomes a noise factor, and I think the, being on the corner over there on that house, and it's close proximity to the walking trail and people walking, and the two streets, the dogs get motivated to bark every time someone goes by or drives by. Clearly, you have neighbors that the barking is aggravating them, and we need to find a solution to lessening that, that process so that everybody can coexist. As far as the reason for the kennel license, the only reason you hear is because you have one dog too many. We can condition that you have no more dogs because of the fourth. My concern is that I don't think that this neighbor or any neighbor should be able to deal with this much noise without a corrective solution tonight to move this forward, whether that means we give you a deadline to put a solid fence up, because it clearly is wide open, and I think the dogs do get aggravated by traffic going by or people walking by or a bicycle that does create another dog walking, that maybe the visionary aspect of them not seeing them will lessen that impact. But you, as an owner, need to control your dogs.
And I've...
And if it means that you bring them in half the time during the day...
That's fine.
We don't need to do that, because as Joe indicated, these two houses down, dog barks all day long. People should have some enjoyment that this should not be going on, and they come here to complain. So we need to have a mechanism to be able to work with that.
And I understand that, but it's, like I said, not only my dogs that bark all day long. If I need to bring them in in the middle of the day when there's mostly joggers out, but it's not just from eleven to two, the joggers are up and down our street. It's during the afternoon when our dogs are already in two, and they don't bark when they're in the basement.
Well, you can't believe them in the basement.
Exactly, but...
I think if you had a privacy fence, that would help.
Yes.
And I think we're going to condition that.
Okay.
I, I think that's got to be done sooner rather than later. I'm not trying to turn around and say this thing's got to be done in the next week, but you've got to be aggressive on it, and I think we need to work with the bill and inspector on a timeline that will be reasonable so that the neighbors can feel that something is being done, and, and everybody's trying to cooperate, you know, for the good of everybody. We have that noise bylaw, that the neighbors can certainly call in, they will do very well, we could pull a dog off, and because of this noise bylaw, we can also revoke the license. What we've, we've gone down this road as a board before where we've given the license from a temporary aspect and then a follow-up in a year. We did it with the chickens, remember?
Yeah.
And the rooster.
I'm taking some notes here.
Yeah, I think that, the point is, you would like to see if there could be a resolution with the parties, and that we can get this situation and move it, I mean, lay it up, like you say, a temporary, and then look at it, two months from now, a month from now, after they work together and try to do something, and see how it all turns out. That's, that's his point.
I would say that we grant a special permit for one year, so then after twelve months, she has to come back here, if there's no problems, then you grant it. And the other thing is, I would say that we put a condition on that one dog has to be inside at all times, okay, so she can rotate the dogs out, because as a matter of right, she can have three dogs, so one dog should be inside at all times, especially during the day, until she installs a privacy fence that is suitable by Mr. Erickson, inspects it and looks at it and says, "Yeah, this will work," you know, so the joggers, people running by won't be able to see it. So if it takes her six months or whatever, then she's got to keep one of the dogs inside. And then I would probably also put a condition on that, you know, if, God forbid, something happens to one of the dogs, that she can't replace the dog, she has to live with three. We've done that before, with the chickens.
With the chickens and the roosters.
Yeah, yeah, and the cats, too.
That's right.
So, those would be the things that would make sense to maybe help control the situation.
I have a question. Who likes the big dogs more than the small ones?
My husband likes the big dogs, and I like the small ones. Yes.
I had neighbors with dogs, they were all noise.
And they, like I said, all of our dogs have bark collars on, and I actually have video on my phone where I'm outside with the dogs, people are running by, and other people's dogs in the neighborhood is barking like crazy.
Personally, I think fences, no fence, the roosters are still going to bark.
But they don't, it's Madeline.
Madeline?
Madeline, the big Great Dane, that barks the most.
The fastest?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the one that needs to be addressed.
And she has a bark collar on, too.
Make it tighter.
I can do that as soon as I get home tomorrow morning.
No, I'm joking, it's already gone. Mr. Commissioner?
Once the board, yes, sir.
Can't you, can't you make the stipulation rather than the dog, one dog have to stay inside, that the fence be up, the privacy, the fence be up before the license is issued?
She's already in violation of the license.
And I'm not trying to be, I don't want to...
Privacy fence is going to blow up as soon as possible.
Right, I understand.
We're not going to go down the road.
Okay.
You've got to get a fence company and move that following.
I understand, I understand, yeah.
John, what do you think is a reasonable time for fencing? I mean...
It can take, it can take three months just to get a fence company to come in, you know, I mean, just to order, by the time you contact and they show up, and it takes a long time, so...
Well, that's why we're going to rotate the dogs.
Yeah, one thing I did want to mention, Mr. Commissioner, is if you do grant this decision to just phrase it that you're granting a special permit to have four dogs.
Correct.
But, but not, not use the word kennel for any reason, because that's, that's defined in our bylaw in a different sense, and that will, you know, just...
Yeah, it should be for...
Phrasing it that way will eliminate any confusion.
It should be for residential animals.
There is absolutely no way that you could, and I don't expect you to, I've had dogs, I love dogs, there's no way there's a family in there anyway.
No.
I can leave you with one of the animals.
And, I mean, that would be like choosing to give one of my children up.
Well, the end result is, the end result here is to have you, as a new resident of this community, be happy, but also you be happy with other residents, and everybody needs to coexist and live together. This type of mechanism that we're going to put in here, we're hoping will solve the problem. This is going to be good for one year, which means you're going to have to come back.
That's fine.
The neighbors clearly are going to be trying to work with this to give you time to get that privacy fence up. Let's hope that corrects a lot of the problem. One dog will stay inside until that privacy fence, you rotate them if you want. You're going to be maxed out at the four, if one passes away, God forbid. If the board so chooses to vote on this, then it cannot be replaced.
That's fine.
Okay. With that, is there anything else that anybody wants to say before I close the hearing? If not, you have the last word before I close the hearing, we take a, take a decision.
Thank you for your time.
Get nervous. Relax. I'm trying to work through this. Okay, the hearing's closed. This is what I wrote down. I'd like your board members to comment if you have any questions concerned. The special permit is granted to this applicant for one year for a maximum of four dogs. And also, one, one dog shall be kept inside rotating daily, where three will only be outside. Privacy fencing will be installed, and we need to put a timeline, timeline on that, and I don't know what's going to be reasonable.
Can you do, is ninety days too soon?
Yeah, it's too soon.
All right.
Six months.
Hundred and eighty days?
Six months.
Well, it, you don't want to exasperate and continue the situation going on. I think is, we'll put thirty, thirty days, I mean, ninety days, and just have her work with the bill and inspector if she needs additional time because of an issue or something.
What do you...
That kind of work?
Well, she's, she's...
I could go in labor any day now.
Yeah, I mean...
Let's, let's...
Can I make a recommendation and go beyond the ninety until possibly at least one-twenty?
No, that's fine.
Because of the situation at hand here also.
You guys are voting on, so what?
For the ground.
Remember now, you've got, you've still got, we still have the issue that's going to happen here because the privacy fence is not up, so the exasperation aspect is still going to be there. We're going to be taking one dog in and rotating that dog, so there's only going to be three out there, but the noise is still going to continue.
But the only thing I disagree with is, as a matter of right, you can have three dogs in the backyard.
Correct.
So we've solved that problem by keeping one dog...
Not the noise.
Three dogs is, is...
People can have one dog in a park all day. Right.
Yeah, yeah.
The only recourse is, as the gentleman said, you know, as John mentioned, we do have a noise bylaw, and if the noise gets to be excessive, we call the police and complain about it. You have every right to do that, and you should do it.
Yeah, and just to add to that, if, if there were a recurring problem where, you know, neighbors were calling, complaining to the police, and the police were coming down, they have in the past, and I'm sure they would continue, you know, to impose fines on it, which would, you know, nobody wants to be fined, so it's a, it's a pretty substantial bylaw.
So you want six months for the fence?
Yeah, I think six months, yeah.
Like David said, you're not going to get a fence company to come out for several months.
All right, so the privacy fence will be installed within six months. Okay. And of course, in the event the dog dies, one will not be added, and it is for residential animals. That's it. With that, do I have a motion?
Make a motion. Who has...
You can't make a motion.
Well, it's...
Back to years ago.
I'm making a motion.
David makes a motion, John seconds, are all those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. So here's the process. You will get a letter in the mail of the decision, a twenty-day appeal period, which means anybody can come in and appeal this decision we've made. I want the, everybody to know that. So if you don't care for our decision, someone within twenty days can appeal that decision, and then we don't know where it's going to take us from there. But we're trying to work this through, and I think everybody's trying to be on the same page to work together, okay?
Okay.
So good luck with that, Dave.
You're having a boy or a girl?